This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the Whole regular meeting on Monday, May 13th, 2024. Deputy Clerk, could I please have the roll call?
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alvin Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilk?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, everyone, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I understand it, there's no one that's interested in making public comment this evening, so we'll go on to officials and staff members' comments, beginning with Mayor Brummel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing tonight, a reminder, the days are waning when you have the opportunity to do the special census. This is a big thing for the community. Please participate. You're going to get things in the mail. Postcards coming up now that they send the letters out. If you don't respond, someone's going to end up knocking on your door, hopefully. But this is really, really important for the community. Each person is worth about $250 per year in federal and state aid. That's over a five-year period. If you multiply that by the number of people that the community has grown by in the last few years, it's a significant amount of money that doesn't have to come from your taxes to fund our operations and the services we provide. It takes about 10 minutes. It's no big deal. Please do reply. It would be appreciated so much by your fellow citizens. And that's all I have tonight, other than welcome back to Alderman Lockett. Now we can get back on track. Glad you're back, sir.
Are there any Aldermen that would like to make comments at this time? How about staff members? No? Okay. Let's jump into the business of the meeting, beginning with our first item, which is an action item: Consideration of Intergovernmental Agreement with DuPage County for the Jurisdictional Transfer of Warrenville Road and River Road. Public Works Director Phil Kukler will introduce this agenda item. Director Kukler?
Thank you, and good evening. When Cantera was developed, there were a couple of items that were overlooked by DuPage County. The map that's on the screen right now is an expansion on a map that's actually included as an exhibit to the IGA. It shows, the red solid lines show the path system along the county roads in Cantera, and then the dashed blue lines represent River Road and Warrenville Road. And it may be a little bit tough to see, but toward the top of the screen, there's a yellow line that represents the Warrenville Road Bridge. And then toward the left-hand side, about the middle of the screen, there's a shaded purple piece of property that's just south of Bower School. And these are all items that are going to be covered tonight. I just wanted to give you a point of reference graphically to see it. So River Road and a section of Warrenville Road effectively became, effectively became local roads when traffic was shifted to Winfield Road and Ferry Road and Deal Road when Cantera was developed and those roads were extended. So a lot of the regional traffic now travels on those roads, and the traffic on River Road was greatly, greatly reduced when those roads were constructed. The path system that's parallel to the county roads was installed in easements. Those easements are dedicated to DuPage County. It's clear on the platte that those are their paths. They really haven't done anything with those paths over the years. They're in dire need of being resurfaced at this point. So these, both of these things are the main subject to the intergovernmental agreement that's included with the agenda backup materials. At the time when Cantera was developed, it had been totally reasonable for the county to insist that the city take over the jurisdiction of the section of Warrenville Road between River Road and Winfield Road and the takeover jurisdiction of River Road as well. They really aren't, really don't belong on the county highway system anymore because they are not regional roads. The county roads tend to be higher traffic volumes that serve regional traffic. These really are, again, local roads. County staff has approached city staff several times over the years, even in my 14 years here, to try to get these transferred to the city. And even though they should be city roads, they aren't yet, and it's hard to justify to city council. We should just take these on out of the goodness of our hearts to take on that liability and the costs that are associated with those. When the path was installed on top of the River Road flood protection berm between Ferry Road and Warrenville Road, the county deferred, or wait, wait, it stays in agreement with the county that defers the payment of $72,000. That's the share of the construction and design costs for that path, waiting to see if the city would accept jurisdictional transfer of River Road and Warrenville Road. The five-year window on that's passed already, because I think that agreement's from 2013. Yeah, the county was still waiting for the city to see if we'd accept the jurisdictional transfer. We had not talked about it. Over time, with COVID and other, other items that came up were more pressing for both the city and the county. The talk, the discussions had kind of waned, and we hadn't really paid attention to it. As Ron Menzies' retirement was approaching last year, we reengaged in those discussions. They didn't get done before he retired, of course. We're here a year later talking about this now. But then it became even more pressing when the former county engineer, Chris Snyder, was retiring last December. So before he left, and Ron and him and I were like the three people that knew what was going on with this, we had a discussion in December in that, the notes from that discussion are what informed the IGA that's in the agenda backup material tonight. So as part of those discussions, it was important from staff's perspective that the county would need to maintain, would need to maintain ownership of the Warrenville Road Bridge. It's something that the city didn't really want to take on the responsibility for another bridge. There were some issues during construction that happened when that bridge was constructed that reinforced that we don't want to take on that bridge. It's a different type of technology and construction method than we typically use on our bridges. So when the county was open to keeping the bridge, that Ron and I felt it was a good opportunity to try to engage with them, try to get something done. Additionally, the other, I'm sorry, the other issue is, we wanted to make sure that the city was receiving other things, other benefits from this agreement than just taking on the additional costs and liability and maintenance of ownership of those roads. So we, Ron and I put our heads together and came up with a few items, or several items to, for the county to react to. And some of them, we knew they were going to say, no, we can't do that. We absolutely can't. And we figured there'd be opportunities for them to say yes to some things. They said yes to more things than we thought they would. From staff's perspective, we wanted to include addition of curb and gutter to the west side of River Road. Right now, it's a ditch system. It's kind of ugly in spots. It's hard to maintain for the residents. It's not a knock on the residents. Ditches are hard to maintain. So this, by adding curb and gutter, you could improve drainage. You can improve the durability of the road, so it'll be a solid edge to the road to keep the pavement from cracking. And it'd make the parkways easier for the residents to maintain with less ditching. There's still will be some ditching in spots, but it'll be a much shallower, easier to mow, easier to maintain. So staff negotiated, worked back and forth with the county, what the work we thought would be included in that, between the county and city staff, came up with a $1 million and $30,000 payment from the county for those improvements that'd be done as part of this agreement. And then city could then pay for the design and construction of those curb improvements on the west side of River Road. The IGA also clarifies that the Cantera path system, which, as I mentioned earlier, has really been neglected over the years. It hasn't been resurfaced at all. It clarifies that those are indeed the county's paths. I mean, we know that, but it's kind of formalizes that, and the county acknowledges that in the agreement. And it gives a commitment for them to resurface the paths by a certain date. There's some commitment by the city in that to help if some of those, the county's got to survey the paths to make sure they all fall within the easements that exist out there. And if any of the paths fall outside of those easements, then the city's going to help facilitate communication between the county and the Cantera Owners Association or any property owners that might be involved. And I don't, I can't believe that the property owners and the association wouldn't be interested in just, if there is an easement discrepancy, just dedicating an easement to the county so they can, the county can actually take care of the paths. The IGA also waives the requirement for the city to reimburse the county that $72,000 for the River Road path on the flood protection berm. And finally, the county is willing to convey a vacant parcel land that, to the city that's located at the northeast corner of River Road and Ferry Road. It's just south of Bower School, just an open grass area right now. The city has a well site that's kind of carved out of that, out of that area. I think the area of the parcel is about 3.8 acres. It's a remnant piece of property that's left over from when the county extended Ferry Road and dedicated the right-of-way. Those, it's just an extra piece of property they have no use for. It's protected by the levy that was, is part of Bower School, so it's not in the flood plain, so it could, there's potential for development of that property. There's nothing specific that the city or staff has in mind for that property at this point, but it is something that the county's willing to convey it for nothing. The city could have that property, then potentially have that developed in the future at some point. The reason that particular item is not included in the IGA is because the city needs to do some due diligence on that to make sure it has clean title, to make sure there's nothing environmentally wrong with it. And then the city attorney needs to work with the county attorney to figure out the proper method of conveying that property. One string that would be attached to that is if the city were to sell that property to a developer for money, that the county would want to split that, any proceeds from that. If it's, if the city doesn't receive money for it, or if it's going to be used for a public use of some sort, then the county's not looking for any payment for the property. And with that in mind, I think that's, all the items are included in the IGA. I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the council members? Alderman Lockett?
So the $1,030, that's for the curb and gutter on the west side. That's basically what the cost is going to be, so that's kind of like a wash for future construction?
That's correct. It's for the design of that, and then the curb and gutter, and there's a little bit of storm sort of figured in there, as well as some patching and stuff.
Okay. And then do you know when we might do that? I know we don't. You just, we're working through it with the work plan.
It would not be this year. And the county, I think, is, in our discussions with them, the payment, we, they'd want us to invoice them toward the end of the year, which would be the end of their, I think they're on the calendar year for fiscal year. So it'd be the end of the fiscal year for them. They'd want us to invoice them in December, possibly next fiscal year. It's in today's dollars, so I wouldn't want to push it out too, too far. I mean, I know the road was just resurfaced, but it, it, the inflation's a little bit unpredictable, so I'd like to probably do it sooner than later. It just wouldn't be this current year.
Right. Yeah, because I was just checking to see if it was like five-year plan or whatever, but it sounds like it's sooner rather than later, so that's great. Thank you.
Alderman Ashauer?
Just, in the past, the paths were never part of any IGA agreement, and that was assumed that those were owned by the county and would be maintained by the county. So it's, seems a little bit unusual that they're included as a benefit in this package. The, the simple numbers are, we could pay $72,000 now, or we can pay $54,000 a year for perpetuity. And the, that's, that's what the cost will be to CMRP if we leave it within the ownership of the county. There, the only benefit we're getting back is the possibility of land use that is, I don't know, probably a third of it is used up with berm. That's part of the flood protection that the county put in when they redid the river area. So it, it isn't exactly as it seems, I guess would be the best way I can put that. But I, I don't, I don't see it as enough of a benefit to saddle everybody in Warrenville with the payment for an account that we're having trouble funding anyway, to just add another figure every year that we may have to raise taxes to justify. Am I seeing something wrong? Is there some way you can explain that better that might make it, make more sense?
Well, the only thing I just think, trying to anticipate this question, is that we've effectively had 30 years of free maintenance on roads that should have been the city's for the last 30 years. I mean, it was an oversight by the county to not have had those roads transferred at the time, because it was completely predictable that the traffic was going to, was going to be greatly reduced with the construction of Cantera and the roads that were extended, county roads that were extended as part of that. Additionally, I mean, if I was the county at the time, I would have insisted that the city or the developer take on the maintenance of those paths to clearly, they're, they clearly are, as you mentioned, the county's responsibility. It's clear in the, in the platte. But this is the first time they've actually acknowledged that. I mean, this has been brought up to them several times over the years, and to have an actual commitment in here where they're going to get out and resurface them, I think is a benefit.
Thanks.
Did the county mention their timeframe as far as the path reconstruction or improvements?
Yeah, we put, I don't have it handy. It's, it's in the agreement. There's, I think it's December, we, throughout, there was, there's a date, it was December 31st of 2026 that they'd resurface them by. If there were issues with getting easements that took longer than that date, then we, Brooke and I added a, a, a date in there of, I think, December 31st of 2027, they would resurface whatever paths that they have easements for and control over at that time. Because we didn't want this to be, I mean, they have some control over how aggressively they're pursuing additional easements, so we don't want this to like hang out there. And I trust them. They've been really responsive, great to deal with on this. But again, I don't want to fall through the cracks where, ah, we just don't have easements. We can push it out till 2035. So there's, there's dates in here that they need to get it done by.
Okay. And then my other question was with regards to the 3.8 acres. Has anything been mentioned? You, you mentioned that it could possibly be another public use, like a park or park district, right? Has, has anybody been in contact with them to see if they have any interest?
No. And I really, with Cerny Park so close by, and we're going to be working, there's a meeting coming up where we're going to meet with the City Park Task Force to talk about transferring Cerny Park to the Park District. I don't see this being a park use. I don't know that the school district would have a use for it. I mean, we certainly want to engage with those groups to say, see if they would have a need for it. But, and there's, again, the possibility of residential development or something there, but I don't, there's nothing specific at this point, since the property isn't ours yet.
And then if we take, if we sign this IGA, does the control of Ferry Road end up belonging to the city and not the, the county as far as police and speed limits and those sorts of things?
Of River Road, you mean?
Yeah, River Road.
Yeah, River, yes. That would all be under the city's jurisdiction then.
Okay.
Because I, the speed limit seems too high on that road for me. I can't imagine having a 40 mile an hour speed limit on a city road.
Yeah, might be one of those things. I know a lot of communities are kind of moving towards 25 or 30 as a, like a citywide type of speed limit with some success. So that's all the questions I have. I think the mayor has a question.
Yeah, you covered some of that, but I, I think it's, it's appropriate that we make this move at this time, as you indicated, that should have happened 30 years ago if the county was really paying attention. They gave us a ride of 30 years where they took care of things. They didn't take care of the path, but they've taken care of the road. I think the curb and gutter and other improvements you're going to make on the west side make perfect sense for the people that live there. If you've driven down that street, it's pretty rough on the west side. The east side has been finished off so nicely with the berm and the curb and gutter, so it'll be a nice improvement for the community. I, I think it's appropriate that we take it over at this time, and I think you've done a pretty good job of balancing that out. If we can get that path fixed, I've written it many times, it is a danger. It is really, really a mess. So that's a huge plus, I think, for the people that use it, and a lot of people use it. So congratulations on putting this package together. I think it's a fair deal, and it's a responsibility that we should take over, and it makes sense for us to do at this point.
Alderman Lockett?
With that, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and the City of Warrenville for, one, transfer of jurisdiction of River Road and part of Warrenville Road except for the Warrenville Road Bridge, DuPage County, to the City of Warrenville; two, assumption of routine maintenance on Warrenville Road Bridge; and, three, clarifying the ownership and maintenance responsibilities over certain multi-use paths in Cantera.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries, and we're on to a second item, which is the consideration of a change order for the OTRS number two, former Sitco project. And Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will introduce this agenda item. I do want the council to call attention to the piece of paper that we got on the dais that has a new committee action that is requested as part of this agenda item. Christine?
Thank you very much. Back in February, City Council awarded the low bid construction contract to Martim Construction for the OTRS Phase One and Utility Improvement Project, which is currently ongoing. During construction, it was identified that there were a few utility-related items that were missing from the bid documents, and the special waste item was significantly lower than what was actually occurring out on the construction site. As you all know, this is a very complex site. It's a remediation project as well as a utility project, as well as a small little parking lot project, and in an area of town that is very historic, and a couple of unknowns came up during construction, as they normally do for projects, but specifically for this one. We wanted to bring it to the council's attention because it does result in an increase of the contract of about 25% for this change order. The project is not done. Usually, there's some additions, subtractions, things typically balance out. But we thought that with these amount of items, that we would bring it to council's attention at this time, because it just, it makes sense right now. The total change order is $247,332.32 for all of these items that are listed in the backup documents, and they are for actual quantities that were measured in place. So these are actual quantities that we found when we were, or the, are re-found when we were out there. This project is budgeted under the TIF III account, and when we were putting together the budget for FY24 and FY25, we were trying to anticipate how much of this project would be in one fiscal year versus the other fiscal year. In reality, what's occurring with this project, and most of it's in FY24, so that FY24 TIF III budget was already going to be lower than what the actual construction had on these change order to it. And the FY24 budget does not have enough money to accommodate the change request. I brought this up to, or I discussed this with Finance Director Dolström, and he suggested that we make a budget amendment for that account to account for this change order. In reality, what will occur for FY25 then will, because of the Batavia Road bid coming in lower, and the, this change order, it'll kind of all balance out in the end between the two fiscal years. But at this time, we need to do a budget amendment. So that's why the memo has a change of action for the committee to request to approve the change order and direct staff to prepare the budget amendment for the TIF III account for FY24. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there questions from the council members? Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. When this went out to bid, we had that special waste line item, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So the cost was already determined per cubic yard?
Yes.
Prior to them starting?
The unit prices were, yes.
Were already established.
Yes.
And then after this was found, the amount of dirt, cubic yards that was taken away, that was all verified by the city hired resident engineer on site and then verified through tickets and everything.
Correct, yep.
Correct. So the, the money, the line item cost had already been established.
Correct.
So it wasn't something after the fact, just something that happens when you're digging holes in the earth, you know?
Yeah.
Sometimes you run into things you don't expect. And I know we knew that it was going to be, you know, we were going to run into something.
Yes, definitely.
But yeah, but yeah, everything was already, basically, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that that cost had already been established, and then it was just a number of loads and stuff coming out, and the city verified all of it.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just had two questions. One is a TIF III question. So will this money then, what you were kind of saying is, I mean, it's, it will ultimately be paid by TIF III.
Right.
But it's not there now, so it'll be, you would think it would go from the general fund.
Right.
But you're saying that Finance Director Dolström said it would be balanced out by other things that came in underbid, or?
Yeah, so there, there wasn't enough for this full, you know, change order to be accommodating FY24. We do have, we do have some money coming back into TIF, well, it's going back in the general fund, but it's going into the TIF III for this project because of this, we have a revolving loan fund payment that we recently got for this project that will offset it, but it can't go directly into the TIF III account. It actually has to go into the general fund. So that's why he was saying that it's going to be fine overall, but we need to account for the actual TIF III charges, I guess, essentially.
But the budget amendment will be a budget amendment drawing out of the general fund at this point.
Yeah.
That's how officially it will look like.
Yes, yeah.
The second thing is, that corner, I get a lot of questions about that corner, and I, I mostly know what's going on, but let me just ask you, since you're sitting right there, what will it finally look like? Not when a developer decides to do anything.
No.
But as we're preparing that, and, you know, can you just?
In the interim.
Talk for a minute about what that corner's going to look like until development happens?
In the interim, yes. So as you can kind of see right now, they actually did the put first, the first level of binder for the parking lot. So the only area that's going to be complete without buildings is the parcel of land that contains the old gas station, old Sitco gas station site. So within that parcel of land, which is essentially the corner there, we will have sidewalk, as part of this project, sidewalk along Warrenville Road, which is in right now. There will be light poles added along the, between the back curb and the sidewalk there with obviously grass and trees planted by Public Works. Public Works is doing the light and, on trees. So there's the sidewalk, which is eight feet wide. Past the sidewalk, depending on where the remediation needed to occur, and if we needed to take out specific areas, and depending on where buildings are proposed to go, at the very corner, there's going to be a large grass area, because that's what in the future, when the developer comes in, that will be that area where people can hang out and, you know, walk around, sit, et cetera. And then adjacent to that, to the east, like if you're going towards hotels, there was a small area next to that grassy area that needed to be remediated. So instead of the cost of, for a remediation area that contains grass, you have to take out three feet of soil and replace it with three feet. So in an area where we think a building is going to go, we decided, why do all that when in the future there's going to be building pad there? Let's just cap that area with pavement. So it's going to be, as you're going towards hotels from the corner, grass area, a little bit of pavement, and then what they have right now is like a stone top to the east of there, because that area did not need to be remediated. So it just needed to have some type of finishing product on there, and staff thought that it would be kind of silly to put grass when there's going to be eventually a foundation, and then it's going to look grass, pavement, grass, like it's just, it would look a little odd. So that will be stone, and then there's sidewalk and a driveway entrance next to hotels with parking along the sides. And some of that parking will extend into the property a little bit for the future, parking for the future development. So there will be some parking there on site, a grass area, and then some lighting and trees installed by Public Works. Now, that's that project. The project that was just recently had a low bidder for the Batavia Road project, part of that project along Batavia Road will extend a sidewalk from that corner of Batavia and Warrenville Road north all the way to Warrenville Grove, past Warrenville Grove Animal Hospital to the Forest Preserve parking lot. It will also add on-street parking on that east side of Batavia Road, what was part of the, you know, preferred plan, angled parking along there. And again, any type of lighting or trees associated with the parkway in that area. So the corner will be complete to a certain point without obviously buildings. North of there, between there and the Animal Hospital will remain as is, because that was not part of the remediation site, and it makes sense just to leave that part as is and not do any work, because that would be all cost in the TIF III district, except for obviously sidewalk. But yeah, so it's going to be ready for, the corner will be ready for a developer to come in and develop the land, but the idea is that they would develop that along with the vacant parcels to the north that lead up to the Warrenville Grove Animal Hospital.
So the only asphalt will be a road and a parking?
Yeah, so it'll be like a driveway entrance. Yeah, so it'll be like a driveway entrance along, next to hotels, and it'll come in, and there'll be parking, yep.
Okay, so the whole thing isn't asphalted over?
No, yeah, so we decided...
Yeah, there was a discussion before, and it was sort of like, oh, wow. So, okay, this is great.
So there's some side, internal side, basic internal sidewalk. We didn't want to completely build exactly yet what is going to be proposed as part of a developer, but we wanted to lay the foundation so that in the future, we could have some potential city events, because there's parking there, maybe a couple food trucks, pop-up sh, you know? We're still working on that, that's part of the new plan for community development, work plan, to see what we can do there, bring some, or we may get a developer that, you know, wants to come in and develop right away, so it's just kind of laying the foundation for, for the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, this whole project includes significant improvements for the hotels in terms of access to their property, in terms of parking and cleaning up the area, so we've taken them into account very respectfully, and we've engaged them in discussions as to what they would prefer. We have an agreement with them on the border there, and it's going to clean that whole area up, and it's going to be to their advantage. Correct?
Yes.
Is that a safe assumption?
Yes, definitely.
All right, good, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving change order number one to the 2024 OTRS number two, Phase One and Utility Improvements with Martin Construction, and direct staff to prepare a budget amendment for the TIF number three fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, thank you. Number three, consideration of a resolution to confirm use of Rebuild Illinois funding for the Mack Road Bridge and Trail Project, and public works director Phil Kukler will introduce this item.
Thank you. You may recall that the city received about $866,000 of Rebuild Illinois Bond funding from the state of Illinois. It was, I think it was made over like three or six payments over a couple of years. The city intends to utilize and has intended to utilize this money to pay for most of its share of the Mack Road project, and that's for the final design engineering and the construction. State requires that the money be tracked in the city's MFT fund, so the paperwork associated with it tends to either be the, similar to that MFT paperwork or using the actual MFT paperwork. So the resolution that's included with the agenda backup materials is actually what you see annually from me when we appropriate MFT money for use of salt and street lighting and stuff like that, that's just our annual thing. But the, we have to use that for the, in this case, for the Rebuild Illinois Bond money too, and there's a deadline to appropriate this money by July 1st of 2025. We don't have to spend it by then, but I've got confirmation from the state that we need to appropriate it, so this resolution's the first step in doing that. Once that's approved and signed off on by the state too, then there's some paperwork the city staff has to fill out to then authorize the expenditure of that money to be used on the Mack Road project. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the council? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion that city council pass a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code to use Rebuild Illinois Bond Funds for the Mack Road Project.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion carries. Our next item is a consideration of a change order for the Mack Road Bridge and Path Final Engineering Contract. Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will tell us about this item.
Thank you. During the Mack Road preliminary engineering design, there was the presumption that comp storage, which is when you fill in a floodplain, you have to provide storage for that fill in one, one and a half to one ratio, that it would be provided downstream of the bridge and would satisfy the permit requirements of DuPage County and ODNR, ODVR. When we say downstream of the bridge, we were talking about actually the area by Warrenville Road Bridge and the west branch. There was a lot of comp storage that was created back when the county did their west branch remediandering project, and there was an IGA stating that the city could use these for funds, for comp storage for other projects in the area. When we talked with the county and IDOT, it was determined that that downstream comp storage area would not satisfy it because it's not hydrologically connected to the Warrenville Road Bridge area. So we had to take a look, or our consultant had to take a look at the bridge design and try and reduce the amount of comps. We were able to provide some comp storage, but not the full amount. They weren't wavering on anything, wouldn't give us any type of, you know, anything to pass what we had, so we had to redesign the bridge and narrow the bridge so that there would be less comp storage, that we would need less comp storage for this project. So when you redesign a bridge, obviously, a lot of things have to be done as part of that, obviously, the roadway and structural plans, various retaining wall designs, site distances, and resubmitting documents to IDOT, because they require addendums and various design variance sheets to submit to them. The additional work was in an amount of $188,000. This is all for the bridge, so it is cost shared, 80% federal and 20% city, so the city's cost of these revision to the bridge is, and it is $37,000, $38,000. Again, it's only related to the bridge only. The agreement and change order for the consultant agreement with ERA is included in the backup materials, and I'll take any questions at this time.
Questions from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, so when, so the bridge is going to be narrower?
Yes.
Than it was?
But it still will contain the same, we, it was a little bit wider than I think it needed to be, so they are doing some due diligence.
Now, just refresh my memory, so the path is going over the bridge on the side?
On the north side, yeah.
Yeah, other side, on one side.
It's part, it's essentially part of the bridge.
Yeah.
With, there's obviously a wall.
All right, so there's still enough space with the big path and?
Correct, yeah.
Thanks.
Same size.
There's a discrepancy in the memo.
Okay.
That Amy wrote. The, the breakdown of the change order is 80/20, but it also gives the breakdown of the original contract, and it says it's 80/20, but it's actually 64/36. So you might not, you might not have those numbers right in front of you, but if someone could resolve that discrepancy and get back, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can answer that. So the original contract is for the bridge and the path, and the bridge, we have federal dollars for, that the 80/20 covers for bridge STP funding, covers preliminary engineering and construction. The STP funds that we have for the path only cover construction, so they don't cover the engineering. So of the engineering, the original engineering contract, it's 80/20 of the bridge-related items, 80, 80 federal, 20 local, and 100% of the path, path contract of the design is all local. So, yes, it's not, that's why we say it's 249, and then the city's responsible for the remaining, it just should say the remaining amount, which is approximately 142,000, it shouldn't say 20%.
It says 80% of the total cost, which is...
Yeah, 80%.
Sounds different from what...
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so noted. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just to confirm, we've already ran this through, right? For the split, we've, it's already been approved by the federal government?
Yeah, the originals, oh, yeah, it's been approved by IDOT.
IDOT, IDOT approved it, so we're good to go.
Yep, yep, that's, I was waiting for them to approve it before bringing it to council.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving the Local Public Agency Engineering Service Agreement Change Order Number One in the amount of $188,862 with Engineering Resource Associates for Final Engineering Services.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is consideration of an amended Illinois Department of Transportation Local Agency Agreement for the Mack Road Bridge and Path Final Engineering Contract, and senior civil engineer Christine Hocking will tell us about this item.
Thank you. This item is directly related to the previous item. This document, the IDOT Local Agency Agreement, documents the agreement between the city and IDOT for what the city will be required to pay for this new amendment or new change order, and it provides, documents the city's commitment to pay the local costs of the project. The IDOT has reviewed the agreement, like I said previously, it outlines it in the backup. It shows very nicely in the backup documents what the original cost was, how it was divided, especially between the bridge and the path, what this new amendment is, that difference, and then what the cumulative division of cost is between the two. So it, the new cost, total cost is $580,000 for the total final engineering. That includes this amendment, which, like I said previously, is $188,000, $189,000 is the amendment. Take any questions?
There are questions from the council? If not, Alderman Lockett, or?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving the amended local agency agreement for federal participation for the Mack Road Path Bridge Replacement Project, which involves a total cost sharing of $400,370 in federal funds and $180,092 in local funds for the total project.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Warrenville Fire District to include work in city Batavia Road contract, and public works director Phil Kukler will introduce this item.
Thank you. The fire district requested that the city include replacement of part of its driveway apron in the city's Batavia Road Resurfacing Project contract. Those quantities are included in the, in the bid that was just opened and awarded by city council to Geneva Construction. The fire district and the city entered into a similar IGA a few years ago when the fire district had requested that some work on their site be included or incorporated into the city's road, annual road program. The IGA includes an estimate of cost that's based on the actual unit pricing from the contract with Geneva Construction with an estimated quantity, and then the fire district's committing to paying the city for the actual work that's performed out there. So if it's, I don't remember what the exact quantities were, but say it was 100 square yards of work that we estimated, it ends up being 120 square yards, they'll pay us for the 120 square yards based on what was actually measured and placed and constructed. The city, the fire districts board is also considering this agreement this week. I forget what night their board meeting is at, but Chief Dina indicated he was bringing it this week. Both the city attorney and the fire district's attorney have reviewed the agreement and are okay with it in this form. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions from the council? You have a question?
Just a comment, just another example of the cooperation between the taxing bodies and the city, which is very unusual and we're very proud of, so good work.
Thank you. There's no questions? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Warrenville Fire Protection District for driveway apron replacement as part of the Batavia Road Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is to review and file the bi-monthly code enforcement activity report, and it's always done in an excellent fashion. I don't know if anyone has any comment or questions regarding that report, but if not, we will take it and do what we say and review and file it. After that, we have item number eight, to review and file the Community Development Work Plan Program for fiscal year 2025. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? If not, we will consider that item filed, and nothing under miscellaneous, no closed session. We have one more item of business to take care of this evening. Alderman Lockett?
Just a quick comment. I want everyone to remember, a couple months ago, when everything was under budget for this meeting, and this one's, you know what I mean? That's why it's all going to even out. But with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, and have a good evening, everyone.
This conference is no longer being recorded.